Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, February 12th at 7:30 PM in the Board of Education Meeting Room. We will move right on to the public hearing. First up is Julie Best and Sarah Parent. Just a reminder to everyone, if you have copies of your speech, please pass them out. If not, please make sure to email the Board so copies can be distributed to the Board in full. And please state your name and address for the record, of course.
Good evening. Excuse me, I'm Julie Best. I live at 38 Red Rose Circle. I have three children, two at the middle school and one at Tokenique.
And I am Sarah Parent. I live at 227 Hollow Tree Ridge Road and I have two daughters, both at Holmes.
We're the co-chairs of CDSP, the Council of Darien School Parents. We wanted to start off by expressing our appreciation to the Board of Education for the extraordinary time and effort they put into helping to make our schools better for all children. We also want to thank Dr. Landon for leading our schools through this time of transition. We know how lucky we are to have him at the helm this year. We'd like to acknowledge some great progress in a few areas. Congratulations on the successful completion of the DHS Cafeteria Project. It was definitely not an easy process, but we have seen the results and we're impressed by the finished product. The whole high school community will no doubt enjoy and benefit from this multifunctional space now and for many years into the future. Thank you for continuing to invest in the professional development of our teachers, for continuing to build on the success of Fitch Academy, for getting the new Ox Ridge School Project underway, and for your focus on security so that our students are as safe as possible at all times. Onto the real reason we're here tonight, the 2019-20 Budget. We thank Dr. Landon and his team for what we believe to be a lean and fiscally responsible budget. Uncertain financial times and challenges within our state demand that we take care not to overburden our town and our taxpayers. At the same time, our ever-changing world and the evolving needs of our students are of paramount concern. We believe that this budget is cognizant of both.
While you will hear later tonight from other CDSP members voicing support for the four additional elementary psychologists, as well as the additional guidance counselor at Middlesex, we wanted to highlight a few things in regards to these additional hires. For those children in crisis and all the others who are struggling or suffering right besides them, the need for added support is urgent. For the teachers who don't have the tools and training to handle situations they face every day, which disrupt their classrooms or leave their students unavailable to learn, the need for added support is urgent. For all of our children, whether they're in special ed, general ed, or the gifted program, who are facing personal, social, and societal pressures, we must identify issues and manage them as early in the child's development as possible. The need for added support to make this happen is urgent. We implore you to recognize this urgency and approve the additional four elementary school psychologists. The time is now. The number is four, not two. The rationale for two full-time psychologists in each elementary school has been clearly laid out by the administration. The need for two full-time psychologists in each school was unquestionably explained by all five elementary school principals. We've heard repeatedly that any other model would not be best practice and would not provide the support that is needed in our elementary schools. Simply put, it would not be money well spent. Thank you for supporting the additional guidance counselor at Middlesex. With two dedicated counselors per grade, this will allow for continuity of services across all grade levels at the middle school. You will also hear tonight from a CDSP member addressing our facilities' needs and concerns. While we've written a new speech for tonight, we honestly could have just dusted off an old one and it would still be perfectly valid. Parents are frustrated that our facilities' issues are not being addressed in a timely manner. To be perfectly honest, in a town that supposedly prides itself on a top-notch school system, our facilities are embarrassing. It's simply unacceptable. Finally, we must take time to thank our fellow CDSP members for their work and dedication to this process and to their schools. Thank you to the Board for the opportunity to speak tonight. The Council of Darien School Parents is in full support of this budget as we believe it supports all learners and allows for an excellent education of all students in Darien.
Thank you both. Okay, before I butcher anybody's name, Leela Buckjune and Michelle Tracy. If I messed it up, feel free to correct me.
That's all right, I could save my time. Good evening, I'm Leela Buckjune. I live at 12 DeBois Street and I have two children, one at Middlesex and one at Hinley.
I'm Michelle Tracy. I live at 13 DeBois Street and also have one child at Middlesex and one child at Hinley. We are the budget chairs of CDSP. We would like to say thank you for what we believe to be a fiscally responsible budget, which will allow Darien to continue its tradition of excellence in education. We appreciate the time and energy required from the many people involved in creating and analyzing this budget. Throughout this year's process, we have had many questions and concerns from parents and would like to share them with you now. As we look to future budgets, there are several areas we'd like to see the Board consider in greater detail, with an eye toward improving overall transparency and accountability. Regarding safety, we would like more discussion on our overall school security. We believe that safety is a top priority for the Board and we understand that you cannot share all the details of the plans and provisions. However, we would like information presented to parents to illustrate that your security plan is deliberate, thoughtful, and future-focused. There is a proposed cut to budget control on the table. We ask you to tread lightly here. If you reduce the budget to this year's number, what happens if an additional section breaks and another teacher is needed? Can you ensure that the money would be found before violating our class size policy?
On the subject of athletics, we find that among parents, there is a lack of understanding around policy and procedures. We are hearing a lot of questions such as, what is the philosophy around cut or no cut? When do we add or cut a coach? What is the threshold for creating and/or disbanding a team? Who should pay for what? What are the responsibilities of the Assistant Athletic Director? Darien High Schools and Clubs councils go through a very thorough and clearly defined vetting process and yet they make up a very small piece of the budget as compared to athletics. It is time to impose some clear guidelines and improve the overall transparency of the procedures for our high school athletics. It is time for a real discussion about Darien's athletic program and its funding. We would like to address the idea of open GOV. This idea keeps surfacing as means to improve transparency around the Board of Education spending. We are not certain if it should be a priority, however, the school budget represents over 75% of the total tax bill for a Darien household. We would like to ask that the Board engage in a public discussion on the idea of open GOV and therefore, we ask that it be included as part of the next objectives and initiatives conversation. Hand-in-hand with transparency are metrics and accountability. Year after year, we ask for performance metrics to quantify the relative success of initiatives undertaken by the district in previous years. For example, how has the one-to-one initiative changed instruction and learning? What positive or negative changes have you seen? How much school-related screen time are children exposed to and what are the implications of that? What are the instructional advantages of the one-to-one model? We would like the same feedback on the department chairs. Have you been able to assess consistency within a department? How are common exams affecting children at DHS? How are we monitoring and responding to teacher fidelity to curriculum? Are students and parents reporting improvements? Budget initiatives are costly and each time we propose a new one, it is even more important to be able to gauge the successes of past initiatives. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you. Anne Fox.
Good evening, my name is Anne Fox. I live at 1741 Post Road. I have three children, two at the middle school and one at Hinley. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the CDSP about our district's facilities. First, we want to thank the Board for their time and effort to improve the high school cafeteria. The new space is a much-needed change. We are also grateful to Dr. Landon for presenting the proposal to update the electrical panels at Hinley, Holmes, and Royal. The parents have been asking for air conditioning in all the classrooms for years. We are thrilled that the district has finally addressed this issue. We must also thank Mike Lynch for his incredible expertise and leadership. He and his team are to be commended for what they do each day within their limited budget. In 2016, the KG&amp;D Architects presented the Board with a comprehensive facilities master plan for our district, which focused on three priorities: the elimination of portables, centrally locating ELP, and addressing the urgent needs of the Ox Ridge School. We are pleased to see the process of rebuilding Ox Ridge and centralizing ELP is underway. We hope the members of the newly formed Building Committee will work as quickly and as efficiently as possible to help develop a plan for a school with an eye towards the future. However, major concerns remain, specifically the portables and the overall maintenance of our aging buildings. We encourage the district and the Board to faithfully adhere to the recommendations in the building condition survey conducted two years ago. We are concerned that the proposed capital items do not adhere to the timeline of projects recommended in the survey. According to the district's website, the last meeting of the Board Facilities Committee was over a year ago, on December 17th, 2017. We understand there was great effort put into the cafeteria and Ox Ridge since then, but we don't understand why the discussion of the remaining items in the master plan, including removing the portables and adjusting the traffic patterns, has ceased. There are still 14 portables in use in Darien. They are not energy-efficient and difficult to secure. In our post-Sandy Hook world, security cannot be optimized when children are outside the walls of the school. Children move between the school and the portables numerous times a day, often without an adult. On a regular basis, children get locked out as they return from portables to the main building. Darien parents have asked the Board to remove portables at every public hearing the last five, for at least the last five years. The Board has heard parents express their frustrations and concerns and yet little has been done. There has been no meaningful conversation or action from the Board to remove portables from Darien schools. We're asking for a timeline on when portables will be removed. This is simply unacceptable. Our children deserve to be safe. Lastly, the Board has repeatedly heard parents' concerns about the traffic patterns at our schools, primarily at drop-off and pickup times. Any of our principals can provide examples of near misses in parking lots involving both pedestrians and other cars. Like the issues of portables, it seems that this issue is not getting the attention it deserves. There's a long list of things to be proud of in our Darien school system. It's time to make our facilities, all of them, part of that list. We urge the Board to make these buildings and our children's safety the top priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Renee Baye.
My name is Renee Baye and I live at 11 Sunswick Road and I am here to speak on behalf of the Council for Darien School Parents to urge the Board of Education to approve the addition of four psychologists at our elementary schools. We want to thank the Board for supporting the recommendation of the additional guidance counselor at the middle school. We believe that this addition, if combined with the four additional psychologists, will work to address the mental health needs of all of our students. The Child Mind Institute reports that half of all mental illness occurs before the age of 14, with the onset of anxiety disorders at a median age of six. The world today is not easy for our children. Close to 20 years ago, the No Child Left Behind Act effectively brought first-grade curriculum into kindergarten, significantly lessening the time available for unstructured play and for our youngest learners. Internet use was in its infancy and the Columbine massacre shocked the country. Google was brand-new, Facebook and Instagram did not exist. Since then, social interaction has been intensified by the ever-present internet and sadly, school shootings are now routine. One of the district's 2018-2019 goals is to quote, "Support students in being productive citizens and practicing healthy behaviors through a whole-school, whole-community, whole-child model," end quote. A growing body of evidence culminating in a major report released two weeks ago by the Aspen Institute's Commission on Social, Emotional, and Academic Development confirms this goal and confirms that cognitive, social, and emotional development are inextricably linked. Children with more developed social and emotional skills are more adept at paying attention, setting goals, persevering, thinking critically, and problem-solving. Their grades, graduation rates, and post-secondary outcomes improve. A second full-time psychologist in all five elementary schools is the most efficient and effective way to address the currently unmet needs, mental health issues presenting in our elementary schools. Our schools could finally be in a position to be proactive in serving all students by educating the whole student, meeting students' emotional needs, and implementing the social-emotional curriculum currently being developed by the administration. Issues would be caught early, preventing them from becoming crises, and children could learn to be empathetic towards their struggling peers. The additional resource would also ensure follow-up and consistent tracking of students. These issues affect all of our children. A child in crisis impacts the entire classroom and school community. Our teachers, who currently shoulder the burden of managing behavioral issues and children in crisis on the front line, do not have the skills or experience to manage every situation effectively. A psychologist who is available to our teachers and students would be able to step in and help so that classrooms can return to being a place where teachers can teach and students can learn. Investing in our students' mental health is not about parents abdicating responsibility. Our schools are mandated to teach social-emotional skills. At present, they simply do not have the resources to implement that mandate. Moreover, parents do not necessarily have the skillset to address the issues we are seeing. A second psychologist could help the district deliver on its goal to be a community resource on education and clinical topics.
Mrs. Baye, I will give you a time warning. You're at four minutes, three is, so if you can mark up.
Okay, I apologize. I'm almost done. A second psychologist could help the district deliver on its goal to be a community resource on education and clinical topics, working in partnership with teachers and families to address these issues in our schools. Approving the addition of a psychologist at each of our elementary schools and the addition of the guidance counselor at Middlesex will not only benefit all of our students and staff, but it will also benefit our community as Darien continues its tradition of excellence in education. Thank you.
Thank you. Doreen Godfrey. As a reminder to speakers, there is a three-limit time limit.
Amy Daniels.
Oh, I'm sorry, Amy Daniels. She was next. Sorry, Doreen. You were right next to each other, it worked well.
My name is Amy Daniels and I live at 94 Old Kings Highway South. I have a child at middle school and one at Tokenique. I want to start by thanking the Board for your time and hard work on behalf of the students of Darien. You each sacrifice so much and you're all superheroes in my book. I am the co-chair of the Tokenique PTO, as well as the Director of Strategic Marketing for Greenwich Education Group. As part of my role, I oversee the marketing for three private day schools, including the Spire School, a therapeutic day school that is a resource for many local school districts, including Darien, for out-of-district placement of students in grades six through 12. The students that come to Spire are often frustrated, avoidant, lacking confidence, and reluctant to engage and to take risks when they arrive. Anxiety, depression, bullying, school avoidance, or self-harming behaviors have made school an unhappy place for them. Their social-emotional challenges have made them unable and unavailable to learn in a traditional setting. By integrating life coaches that are trained therapists into their daily school experience, Spire students are able to reengage and rediscover their love of learning. I am not suggesting that Darien needs to implement this model. However, I do believe that the addition of four school psychologists at the elementary level will provide every student, and not just those receiving special education services, with social-emotional resources and support. I believe additional school psychologists combined with the planned rollout of the social-emotional learning curriculum could, over time, possibly result in fewer kids from our district needing a school like Spire. Last week, my company leaders were in a meeting with the head of Pupil Services from a lower Fairfield County School District. When we asked the biggest trend she's seeing in her district, her response was mental health at the elementary level. Anxiety, depression, self-harm, things like third and fourth graders cutting themselves. It's appalling and unthinkable. Sorry. Yet it's happening. This issue is not unique to Darien. And unfortunately, parent intervention alone is not going to solve it. Just going to take a breath. Under time.
It's okay, breathe. We allow time for breathing.
The Board is familiar with the cost of adding these psychologists. In closing, I ask the Board to consider the long-term costs of not adding them. The cost of diluting each dollar we put into the education of our children because many students are coming to school unavailable to learn due to whatever issues they are struggling with. The cost and implications of one child distracting from every student in class due to his or her disruptive or withdrawn behavior, and our teachers' inability to provide the scaffolding needed to address it. The cost of teacher absenteeism and the related substitute teacher budgetary implications, which we've heard are higher in Darien than elsewhere. By not having students' mental health issues identified and addressed early on, something that could have been managed and mitigated ends up being exacerbated. Some of these kids could likely end up with a district outplacement to a school like Spire with tuition around $70,000 a year. And yet, the biggest cost of not adding these psychologists cannot be measured financially. Many of our elementary kids are unhappy. They are anxious. They are depressed. They are hurting. You're hearing it firsthand from our principals and administrators. What are we saying as a school district and as a community if we put success, performance, and winning above the health and happiness of our youngest students? What is the cost associated with that? Thank you.
Thank you. Doreen Godfrey.
I can't do this. I'm not getting it, so I'm going to quit. I don't want to make a mistake. These are the statements I hear every week coming from children ages five to eight. I stand before you today as a mother of three elementary school-age girls, as a Tokenique PTO co-chair, and also the owner of a small business in town. I am the co-owner of DL Studio. I teach dance to over 300 children ages four to 15, with the vast majority of these families residing here in Darien. These three roles position me to offer a unique perspective on the different challenges that our children face growing up here. I think most of us, if not all, can agree that the current state of our nation and society makes the challenge of raising children a particularly fearful one. We are not dealing with what you or I or our parents dealt with as kids. Adolescent depression and anxiety have skyrocketed since the advent of the smartphone, but this didn't happen overnight. Could this be a parenting issue? Yes, it could be. Could this be a social media issue? Absolutely. But if a psychologist can help with both sides of the coin, then there is no question that the addition of another one in our schools is a necessity. The pressures of social media, coupled with trying to keep up with friends and peers in sports and academics and activities, it's a lot. It's a tough time to be a kid. To most of our students, their favorite part of class is at the end, when they can freestyle. This is when they get to dance to the music however they want. When we first started the business a few years ago, it was one child at the back of the room. But now, every class, there are a handful that just stand there, frozen. When asked why they aren't moving, they say, "I don't want to do the wrong thing," or "I'm afraid to lose." My partner and I are baffled by it because there is no wrong thing. There is nothing to lose. To my own child, having the most silent piano lesson known to man. Why? She was afraid to press the wrong key, so she pressed none at all. These societal pressures are paralyzing our children with fear. Children need someone to talk to other than parents and teachers to guide them, give them the tools to understand their emotions, verbalize their stress, and identify what is causing it. By the time they reach middle school, I've seen these issues become so deep-seated that they do not know how to function in a classroom of their peers because they are so stricken with anxiety. I could go on and on about this because as a parent and a teacher, it's a topic that I'm particularly passionate about, but I only have three minutes. Suffice to say, I support the increase in the school budget and I think the need for an additional school psychologist in each of our schools is nothing short of a necessity. Let's do all we can to arm our children with the tools necessary to navigate an extraordinarily difficult time to be a child. We are doing a disservice to all of us if we do anything to the contrary. Thank you.
Mrs. Godfrey, can you either give us a copy and/or email me a copy so I can distribute?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Michael Mullen.
My name is Michael Mullen. I live at 8 Nickerson Lane and have lived in Darien for 14 years. Here in support of Darien PTO, I have a daughter at Middlesex Middle School and a son and daughter at Hinley. I very much support the increase in the proposed budget for the 2019-2020 school year. Additionally, this includes my support for adding an additional psychologist to each elementary school, as well as a guidance counselor at Middlesex. I think it's important to enhance the social and emotional learning at our schools. I would also like to see the portables removed at our elementary schools. I do not think they are conducive to learning as a classroom and worry about the safety element regarding young children. Many thanks for your time.
Thank you. Same thing, if you could email us a copy of your remarks, that'd be great. Thank you. Carl Alto.
Carl Alto, 36 Coach Lamplane. I have two at Hinley. I'm here to support the budget. The PTO co-chairs have spoken eloquently about the need for clinical psychologists, so I'm not going to go there. I'm going to talk more about the building facility upgrades. This is the first time I'm here. The reason I'm here is because of the conditions at Hinley in the autumn. You know, air conditioning makes kids, makes everyone more productive in heat. And so, we give all these kids tech, only to have them slumped over, over their Chromebook when it's 90 degrees outside. So, we, you know, fully support the increased electrical upgrades so that the elementary schools can get air conditioning and that the portable basically can be removed. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, if you could email your comments, that would be great. If not, we'll have them on the record. That's all that. Alex Hall.
I live at 14 Chester Road. I have three children, two are at Holmes. Good evening to members of the administration, members of the Board. Thank you very much for taking the time to listen during such a rigorous and fizzy budget season. I stand before you to show my unequivocal support for the hire of four full-time elementary-based psychologists. Anxiety and stress in school is not new, and while the need has been there for many years, we have not proactively sought these positions until now. Now is the time. Darien has an amazing reputation as a school district for its academics and sports. However, the school system will not be able to sustain this high level of excellence and competition without the very fundamentals of its students feeling wholesome and psychologically nourished. Of course, parents play an enormous role in teaching and navigating their children on a daily basis. These new positions are not meant to dilute the efforts of parents, nor should they ever. However, it is undeniable that the current education system is becoming increasingly challenged with the need for more mental health resources in our school. As you know, our current psychologists are dealing with schedules so full, they have become almost inaccessible. PPT 504 requirements, team meetings, counseling with parents, consultations, counseling and/or support for kids with real-life trauma, general education issues, kids with school avoidance issues, consults with classroom teachers on managing behaviors, testing reporting for children who are referred. These are just a few of the responsibilities for just one psychologist in each school of approximately 450 students, give or take. Approving these hires would certainly aid in managing these responsibilities while facilitating a more proactive environment. To conclude, these are different times we live in. Anxiety and social issues and pressures have always percolated in school. However, transparency and conversation around such issues was nowhere near where it is today. This is a non-stop, hyper-stimulating, wired world we live in. This is a nonstop, hyper-stimulating, wired world we live in. Currently, presentations on anxiety, followed by ADHD, continue to draw great numbers of parents and educators when it comes to programming. So we all know it is something that is of great concern to many. And let it be clear, this is not just about special education. Psychologists have a trained eye and ear to address so many of the more fearful and tangible mental needs of our students. I implore you to consider these proposed hires in order to increase the psychological and behavioral support to our younger students. This would help to ensure and enhance Darien's ongoing reputation for its commitment to our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Lublin.
Hi, Katie Lublin, Twenty-four Maplewood Drive. Actually, I have prepared remarks tonight because I wasn't willing to risk the possibility of being quoted in the paper with personal anecdotes that would then contribute to additional anxiety in my household when it comes to school. The mental health of our students is not secondary to education. Strong mental health is necessary in order for students to learn effectively. The born-of-education, the administration, and the Darien community at large continuously invest in education, athletics, and the arts for our children. In Darien and throughout the rest of the country, the number of students with mental health issues has grown exponentially into an epidemic over the last several years. Unfortunately, like many other communities across our country, our school system is struggling to address this problem. In addition to the pressures created by our town's intense academic and athletic environment, students today have to contend with the reality of active shooter drills, lockdown drills, and societal pressures stemming from a globally connected, never-sleeping world. It's time that investment in our students' mental health moves to the forefront. Mental health distress is not something found only in upper schools. Academic and social anxiety, school avoidance, and disruptive behaviors are all too common amongst our youngest students. These issues are present in special education, general education, and gifted elementary classrooms, and they require professional support for both our children and our staff. Sadly, our current resources do not have the capacity to meet these needs. Every student in the Darien Public School deserves to have access to the support necessary for them to be a successful, whole person. While our district is working towards a well-thought-out social-emotional curriculum, it simply cannot be implemented without the correct number of mental health professionals in our schools. Currently, the majority of our elementary psychologist's time is taken by mandated IEP meetings. There's limited time available for other students who need support. With additional staff, the schools can proactively help students, families, and staff by identifying mental health issues and teaching skills that will move our children from coping to thriving. A shared or part-time model will not work. These professionals need to be available in the school five days a week, where our students spend the majority of their time. Our kids are struggling. Adding these additional four FTEs is the right thing to do. It is our job as responsible citizens, parents, educators, and board members to ensure the next generation is able to succeed and flourish.
Thank you. John Long. And just as a reminder, if anyone else would like to speak and has not signed up, there is a sign-up sheet in the front of the room.
John Long. I live at Four Hundred Mansfield Avenue. I have a first grader at Ox Ridge and an incoming kindergartner at Ox Ridge. Lived in Darien for six years, and I support the budget and want to specifically, briefly, speak to the addition of the four psychologists to the elementary schools. We are currently understaffed and not fulfilling our obligation to support the full needs of all students. Research shows early intervention is critical in preventing escalation of smaller mental health issues and decreasing the ultimate economic and social costs on our community. I'm going to read off a few statistics from the CDC. Nearly one in five children aged three to seventeen have a mental, emotional, or behavioral disorder like anxiety or depression. Furthermore, the percentage of children aged six to seventeen suffering from depression or anxiety has increased from five point four percent in 2003 to over eight percent a decade later. Think we can all agree that children are growing up faster as they have different, as they have access to different stimuli and information than many of us did when we were in elementary school. With this expedited mental maturity comes bumps in the road, and we, as a community, would be well-served to establish proper levels of support. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Samantha Galt.
My name is Samantha Galt. I live at Forty-six Birch Road. Thank you so much for your time tonight. First, I have to give a shout-out to Doreen for the freestyling. Thank you. Because, my god, do we need more of that in our schools. As a teacher with thirteen years' experience in private schools, I've got to say Common Core is crushing us. But tonight, I am speaking in favor of four additional psychologists in our elementary schools. My husband and I have lived in Darien for nine years, and while I've worked, as I said, in private schools in Greenwich and New York City for thirteen years now, it was always our expectation that our children would attend public school here and be part of this amazing community. My son, William, started kindergarten at Ox Ridge in August, and five months later, I feel like the Darien school system has let us down. I was told they would be ready for my son, so I put him on the bus and waved goodbye. I had no concerns for him. He was so ready. I naively believed that kindergarten would be fun. He and I were both excited for the adventure of the bus and the new friends and the learning. And as I said, being a teacher, I am a teacher, and my son was the ideal student, as most five-year-olds naturally are: eager to please, confident, endlessly curious, eager to make connections with his peers and with his world. It took about a week of school to put him in his place. A fever sore broke out on his lip from the stress of, as he would tell me before he went to bed at night, not knowing everyone's names and feeling dopey. It didn't help that an older boy on the bus subsequently called him "booger dude." From there, all of his energy went not toward learning or enjoying, but rather toward managing his environment, figuring out whom he could trust and how our system works. There is very little joy as he goes off to school in the morning. He's emotionally exhausted. Returning to school after winter break, I watched him in his own world, taking deep breaths as he waited for the bus. Focus, William, focus. One day, early in the year, he simply ran away from the bus in protest. When I drove him, it took an hour of our wonderful and overworked Ox Ridge psychologist, Annie Farson's, time to coax him out of the car and once again help him unpack his anxieties. My son is not unique. He is like every other five- or six-year-old in our schools who needs more love and more attention. More people letting him know they are glad he came to school. More people present in his day to answer his questions and encourage him to ask more. More people with whom to share stories about his weekend. More people present to validate his feelings and let him know that he is human. When we give our children this attention, they pass it on. They take joy in each other's presence, inquire about each other's weekends. They recognize each other's vulnerabilities as human. They treat each other with a little more kindness and a little more respect. We must do better at encouraging and modeling healthy relationships for our children. We can do this at home, of course, but it is not enough. I put my son on the bus at eight twenty-five because I have to on the days I go to work, and on the days I don't, he's so afraid of breaking out of his routine, he won't let me drive him. And I do not see him again until three fifty-five. Seven and a half hours is a long day. I would like to believe that those are quality hours our children spend at school, that they are hours in which our children feel safe enough, confident enough, and happy enough that learning happens in the way it should: joyfully, collaboratively, and naturally. I know from working in schools myself that it takes a lot of hard work on the part of a lot of dedicated adults to cultivate the kind of learning environment I dream of for our children. At Ox Ridge, Luke Forshow, Christina Ulrich, Annie Farson, and others are doing that work, and they need more support. Staffing an additional school psychologist at each of our elementary schools is an important step in the right direction.
Mrs. Galt, if you could wrap up. You're well over time.
I would like to thank Dr. Forshow, Ms. Ulrich, and Dr. Farson for everything they've done to let William know he's part of a community that cares about him, and I hope the board will do what it can to send him and all of our children that message as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Zerby. A reminder for everyone, just copies or send in your speech or your comments. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Amy Zerby, and I live at Nine Morehouse Drive. I have a seventh grader at Middlesex and a freshman at the high school. I'd like to thank the Board of Ed for holding this forum for public comment. I'd especially like to thank the district administration for the proposed mental health initiatives which our district desperately needs. I support the proposed additional guidance counselor at Middlesex. We have been asking for an additional counselor for years. Six guidance counselors will enable the school to establish an effective social and emotional learning program. We have heard that our students need to learn resilience. Unfortunately, I have seen students move in the opposite direction. In recent years, suicide and self-harm have dramatically increased among our adolescents. According to the CDC, self-harm among our ten-to-fourteen-year-old girls has tripled from 2009 to 2017. Those are our fourth-through-ninth-grade girls. In a July 2018 article, The New York Times stated that eighteen percent of our adolescents have engaged in self-harm. Researchers have suggested that we look at this phenomenon as a public health problem. Our schools need to be proactive in combating these issues, but it has been practically impossible because our counselors are increasingly overburdened with meetings and student crises. I would also like to comment on the proposed athletics budget. I oppose the changes brought up for discussion during the January twenty-second Board of Ed meeting regarding payments for off-site athletics practices. For years, the Board of Ed has been discussing the financing arrangements for teams that practice off-site with no resolution. I request that you not change the funding in the proposed budget. Rather, at some point in the near future, I recommend that you establish definitive guidelines or a policy regarding financing for off-site athletics practices. I think that all parties would find that useful. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Sarusi.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Sarusi. I live at Twelve Riggs End Road. I have two freshmen at Darien High School. And I'm here tonight to support the district's budget and ask the Board of Education to approve the addition of four school psychologists at our elementary schools and a middle-school guidance counselor. Our district is in need of psychologists and guidance support to effectively counsel the current and growing needs of our students and implement the social-emotional learning initiative that our administration has developed. It is our hope that early intervention at the elementary and middle-school levels will not only help the children who are in need of support today, but also help them with the coping skills necessary to access the curriculum and face the challenges of high school and beyond. Psychological and guidance counseling is available to any student in need of emotional or behavioral support. That means our athletic students, our gifted students, our musical students, students with disabilities, and any student who's just having a bad day. Our Darien parents, we all know them, are very aware of our children's mental health needs, and many seek private therapy for social, emotional, or psychiatric support. But our children also need the support of trained school professionals to help them navigate their day in our classrooms. We provide our students with excellent teachers, technology, music programs, beautiful sports fields, unique enrichment programs, and new or improved facilities. But if our students cannot attend school with a healthy mind, then all of our efforts fall short. Imagine if we can help our emotionally fragile students confidently access the curriculum, play sports on one of our beautiful turf fields, perform in one of our auditoriums, join their friends in the new cafeteria, attend a class trip, or represent our district at the Quiz Bowl. Imagine the success of all of our students if our teachers can deliver an uninterrupted day of instruction to a class of fully-engaged students. An effective social-emotional learning program will also provide all children with the tools and words that they need to help their classmates who may be struggling. Imagine a school environment where our children can develop empathy and compassion to say a kind word to a classmate in distress instead of looking away, or have the strength to find a teacher or professional if they sense that their friend is engaging in self-harm, risky behavior, or terrible, dark thoughts. We are fortunate to have a dedicated group of administrators who have developed a budget that addresses the very current needs of our students. Each line item is important and necessary, but the emotional support of our students should be our primary focus now and always. The addition of four psychologists and a guidance counselor cannot wait until our next budget season. Thank you for listening. I appreciate all of your time and dedication.
Thank you. Kelly DePam.
I'm going to be speaking on behalf of Jamie Zionic tonight. She is under the weather, so she would be doing this portion. So, thank you for your time and service during this lengthy budget cycle. We not only ask the Board of Education to approve the addition of four psychologists, but also to align these hires with the full implementation of social-emotional learning, SRBI for behavior, and dialectical behavior therapy as outlined in our district goals. School and after-school programming should be accessible to all students as set out in the SEL model. At our schools, many children can't participate in after-school programs because ADA accommodations aren't being provided. New hires are not enough. All teachers need to be trained in nonphysical ways to support and positively incentivize students. We strongly support increasing Board of Education updates on general and special education support services at least twice per year in order to monitor progress toward district goals. Please consider reestablishing a Board of Ed subcommittee in this area to provide better understanding for all stakeholders and to minimize the need for lengthy Board of Education meetings. The addition of a guidance counselor at Middlesex would provide two counselors per grade level to support the middle-school model. This allows for increased and consistent participation in grade-level colored-team meetings for students, and counselors would no longer need to be split across teams. Middlesex's guidance departments per student caseload average would decrease, therefore would be better aligned with counselor caseload averages in our DURG as well as aligned with the high school. An additional counselor could help facilitate a smooth transition for students entering middle school, the big league from fifth to sixth grade, and eighth graders preparing for high school, two anxious and stressful time periods for students. Finally, we ask for more transparency in the district budget document. We encourage the district to recategorize RC24 to support services, as there are many general education support services included in RC24. Budget transparency will be improved by detailing the number of students who receive 504 accommodations in each school, documenting the hours logged in each category of psychological services, and providing data as to the number and type of 211 requests logged by each district school. We ask that these items be clearly itemized in the district budget document. Thank you.
Thank you. Jocelyn Delancy.
Good evening. My name is Jocelyn Delancy, president of the Darien Education Association, and I'm hoping to speak on behalf of the elementary school teachers tonight. We first want to thank you for considering the addition of a second school psychologist per elementary school as we head into the 2019-2020 school year. We were grateful to get support of an additional school psychologist split between the five schools in recent years, but as the needs of our student population grow, we are recognizing that a 1.2 school psychologist per building is simply not enough. As classroom and specials area teachers, our goal is to ensure that our students are given the tools to thrive both inside and outside of the classroom. Whether we are building a foundation in reading and mathematics, a growing love of music, or the ability to speak fluently in a second language, our goal is to give our students the best quality learning offer at the elementary level. We come to work happy and ready to embrace our student population regardless of need, ability, behavior, or motivation. We have been trained to work our magic in classroom management, address the skill sets articulated in our curriculums, and communicate, collaborate, and communicate and collaborate with parents and colleagues. We address the social-emotional needs of our students on a daily basis and help our students navigate the world around them so that they come to our classrooms available to learn. While our toolboxes are large, training strong, and care for our students is tremendous, we do not have nearly a big enough toolbox or as much training as a second school psychologist would bring to the table. In short, we need a little extra help. We want to thank you again for considering this initiative. We know that you've seen the numbers and have been given multiple presentations and now have heard from other stakeholders, so I won't labor the facts. The fact is that an additional, the addition of a second school psychologist per building would not only help our teachers better support our students, but there really is no way to measure how much this would benefit the academic and social success of all the students in the Darien public schools. Of course, we also support the addition of the school guidance counselor at the middle school in the budget as well. So, thank you very much for giving me the privilege to speak before the board. We hope, we look forward to continuing to work to give the Darien students the best quality learning experience possible. Thank you.
Krista, would you mind grabbing that list? And Mrs. Sarusi, you're on the list again? Were you meant to be, or just double sign? Okay. She wanted another three minutes. Thank you. Thank you. Nick Giottis?
Hi there. I just wanted to start off by thanking the Board of Education for giving us the opportunity to speak on behalf of something that we believe in. Obviously, you've heard a lot about the four elementary school psychologists. That's not what I'm talking about. I'm here on behalf of the swim team, but I do think it's really important that we have this kind of...
Whoa, the swim team?
This kind of open discussion. And so I wanted to start with addressing Ms. McNamara and talking about the 50% proposed cut for the swim team budget.
That's not correct.
Okay. Apologies. That was, I believe, January 15.
The off-site rental thing.
Yes.
Wait, let's... It's public hearing. We can clarify after our conversation.
Apologies. The off-site rental cut, which would be a part of the total budget. Apologies. So this cut, obviously, on paper looks very reasonable. Specifically for diving, the per student cost is six grand for boys divers, and compared to any other sport, that does look absolutely absurd. But according to CAC and according to any meet that you'd see for the swim and dive team, swimming and diving are connected sports. And if you were to count the cost per person of the swim and dive team, for boys, it would end up being $1,061, and for girls, it would end up being $1,051. And that looked into the actual cost for a combined sport, swimming and diving, is something that I think makes the cost per person more manageable, especially when facilities, as you're talking about, and personnel make up almost the entirety of the diving cost. And when you're looking at per student cost, that $1,061, $1,051 would be lower than a number of the teams at the high school: baseball, basketball, cheerleading, golf, ice hockey, gymnastics, sailing, softball, squash, volleyball, wrestling. So it seems as if, connected, those two sports, swimming and diving, wouldn't take as big a burden than looking at them separate. And that would be the reason that I would bring up the fact that this year, the accounts for swim and dive were separated in terms of filing. And so if you were to add money that was raised from volunteering or raised from the parents, which is $7,000 this year, you would notice that you would have to put it into a single swim account rather than the swim and dive account. And that separation seems to be the catalyst for this idea of cutting funding for the facilities that we, the Board of Education currently and the taxpayers pay for now, but would be proposed half-paid for by the parents. It seems as if, at least from the perspective of the swimming/dive team, that by separating these accounts, there has been a movement to treat the two teams as separate and such give more validation to cutting the budget for the dive team while treating the two teams as a team that works as one unit. So that would be all that I would have to say on that. Thank you very much for your time.
If you have any notes, Mr. Giottis, that you could email me, that would be great. Thank you. Carl Alto? Oh, all right. Double sign up again. Pargan Shamu? Shama? Sorry.
S-H-A-R-M-A.
M-A? Can you just spell your last name for me?
Oh, yeah. S-H-A-R-M-A.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Perdun Sharma, and I'm a junior at Darien High School and also on the swim team. Just like the last speaker. And so while he talked about the numbers and all that, I think it's important to talk about the individual experiences that people have with the team that would be affected by what I'm going to continue to call a cut, just like my teammate did. And I think that, first of all, it's important to look at the swimmer themselves. I personally, it's the highlight of my year, when you go down there and you get to be part of the team, and you get to go and compete at all these locations, train every day for hours on end with your fellow teammates, people who you might not always interact with at school, but through the function of the team, we're all able to get together. And the reason for that is because of all the team-building things that the team does, such as during February break, we have a team-building exercise, such as going to panic rooms, doing fun stuff like that, just helps the team get to know each other. There's money used to buy caps and shirts for the team during state season, something that, again, just makes us feel more like one unit. And if there's... And this money is already mostly fundraised by the parents. However, due to this cut, due to less money being given by the school or by the government and whatnot, you know what I mean, there would be, more money would have to be raised by parents to make up for this, for the cut. So things that the team find essential to its team-building activities, things that really make the team the team, would be either less extravagant, wouldn't have the same meaning as they would before, wouldn't really make the team feel like it's important. I think that's what a really big part of this is, is how each individual swimmer feels when they go to this team. And I'm just here, and some of my teammates are here, but there's still so many more of us who unfortunately couldn't make it, and we all share the same sentiment. I think that's what I really want to be highlighted. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Shama, if you have any notes you want to send to the board, please do. Connor Zalinski?
Before I begin, I'd like to thank the board for their time. My name is Connor Zalinski. I live at 28 Oakshade Avenue, and I've come here today to oppose the proposed cuts to the Blue Wave Swim and Dive Team. Over the past four years, this team has been my rock and has been such a big factor in my life, and has fostered a positive and healthy environment for me. And I truly believe these budget cuts will hinder our ability to win future championships. As we already have proven, we are capable of winning champions, evidenced by last year's first place at state finals. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Zalinski, if you have anything to send to the board, please do. Mike Murray?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm here as a parent. My name is Michael Murray. I have two sophomores at the high school now and two others that have graduated the high school. And I'm here to speak against the cut in the facilities fees for the swim teams. And not that I'm against necessarily cutting if things are in need of cutting, but in this particular case, it seems to me that this cut is arbitrary and focused directly on the swim teams. And I don't know why. It's a relatively low-cost team when you go price per pupil. I'm looking at a graph that I think was published by the Board of Ed off of the Internet, and certainly there are a few that are less expensive, but a lot more that are more expensive. And the reason for my opposition is it just seems like it's pretty easy to point out the facilities fees for hockey and for swimming, but your graph here doesn't show any fees or costs for those fields or gyms at the high school. And that's, I don't think, reflected here because there are costs. And it's just very simple to point these out, but you have to allocate it. So if you're going to make cuts, my point is please make them all across the board. And I think this is a wonderful program, and it's difficult to swim in Darien because we have to travel to the Y and everything else. A lot of our competitors don't, and a cut like this would just make it even more difficult. So hopefully you'll reconsider, and thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Murray, if you have any notes that you could send to the board, we will distribute them. Thank you. That is all, unless there is anyone else here that would like to sign up to speak? Okay. Did you just sign in for us? Oh, there's one right there, too.
Thank you so much. So I just have a few things.
Could you just state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, my name is Brian Stobie, and my address is 1 Saw Box Lane, Darien. Just so you think, maybe the solution is just to build a pool, and we don't have to do anything like that.
Artwork.
So...
We like the way you think.
So, but I just want to, there's been a lot of talks. I just want to make sure there's a few things that, if you cut this proposed budget, you're not cutting money, you're going to cut a team. If, I have, by the way, full disclosure, I have three girls that swim, and I have a boy that's currently on the men's team. My three girls are grad, oh, are done with the swim program, and one is a senior. So if you cut, and I'm just talking about diving, if you cut something from diving, you're not cutting a budget. That team is going to disappear because I, as a parent, would look at that and say, "Well, if I have to make that kind of contribution, I'm going to go elsewhere." Because it's just, I mean, it's just an overwhelming burden to that person. Once you, it's going to start a vicious spiral. And we're talking about practices, which, thank God, you know, because there's so much on sports about Darien, about T-shirts, and all this extracurricular stuff, but what you end up cutting is a practice, the heart of the sport, right? So that, to me, is, you know, paramount. I mean, this little investment that we're making to string these practices together, whether it's at Darien or Greenwich or New Canaan, is enough of a burden on these teams. And to cut any bit, you know, I get you have to cut, but you're going to start losing members of these teams. And at the end of the day, I don't, just think that's the direction that we should go for the little investment that we have to make. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing no one, we thank you all for your comments and the time you took in putting them together and for coming out here. We will move on with our agenda, which includes a further review of the 2019-2020 superintendent proposed budget. My name is next to it, but Dr. Landon, I believe you have a handout? The handout for the proposed budget?
I do.
If you're leaving, we just ask that you do so quietly so we can keep moving. So Dr. Landon, if this wants to go around, I believe the top part, our administrative recommended modifications to the budget, if you could walk us through them?
Yes, that is correct. Beginning with the various furniture accounts, which you can see under RC 1, RC 3, and RC 26, we are able to accommodate those in our current budget, so therefore we don't have to ask for them as a new expenditure in the 2019-20 school budget. That would represent a reduction in our request. We have at the board's request split, the athletic director from the assistant director, and that's shown in RC 11 under 397 and new. And in the world language curriculum item, which is RC 19 and RC 15, we have moved that cost from the standardized testing to where it more properly belongs, which is software maintenance, but that is wash. None of those are reductions. We have recommended reducing one staff member, certified staff member, in RC 24 because at one point we had a teacher of the visually impaired paid for by the school system. That responsibility has now been taken over by the Connecticut Department of Rehabilitation Services, the Bureau of Education, and Services for the Blind. So that is a free service, and so therefore we're able to reduce our budget by one position. If you move on further on speech therapists, that amounts to a salary adjustment related to the fashion in which munis, the accounting system, rolled over staff. It did not accommodate that change in a proper fashion. We discovered that only recently, and so that, therefore, is a reduction of another almost $41,000. And in teachers' aides, we know that in this particular instance, we had an aide working with a youngster who's no longer in the system, and so therefore we can take that as a reduction. And so that represents our total reductions recommended in the current budget for the board.
Okay. We will now run down the modification list. If there are further questions amongst board members, we can talk to them, or if the administration has clarifications. There was a modification request for the department chair proposal change. Dr. Landon, you issued a memorandum to the board. Would you like to discuss your feelings on that modification? And then if there are board questions, we will entertain them.
Yeah, I'm sorry I didn't emphasize this item enough during our budget discussions. We talked about psychologists, which obviously, the need there is for servicing kids. Talked about the guidance counselor also servicing kids. But the department chairs also serve kids the way they are currently utilized and the way I would hope the board would consider utilizing them. Currently, each of our department chairs has one regular class that it teaches, both at the high school and/or the middle school, one or the other. The problem with the current arrangement, and I think it was, you know, when it was implemented, that was a good idea, the way it was suggested, the idea being that, well, perhaps if the department chair in the classrooms with kids, they'll, they have a better understanding of kids. But I would remind you that there are many people who work in our system who serve kids, who also have an incredible understanding of kids and don't necessarily work in the classroom with kids, although many, many, many of them have a history of working with kids, much as the department chairs do. So currently, our part-time department chairs are unable to engage the students who are in their teaching classes. They can't engage them in post-teaching conversations and advisories because their non-teaching schedules do not match those of their teaching schedules. In other words, we expect that all of our teachers will be available whenever kids can be available to meet with those students, after class, during the day, before the day, whenever their students are available to meet with them. Under the current schedule for department chairs, this is not possible. If the department chairs were to be full-time, they would have, not only would they be able to attend to their regular duties, which include supervision of all the members of their department, post-observation conferences after observing teachers, which they're required to do on a regular basis for each of their teachers, and they're required to evaluate their members of their departments. They also have to meet with the principal and assistant principals on all kinds of school issues, as well as with the special education staff when there are issues as well. All of these meetings take place at times when their kids might otherwise be available. And so long as they're not available to meet with their own kids and their teaching, they just can't do, fulfill their full responsibilities to the kids they're serving, and nobody really wants that. On the other hand, if they're free to supervise all of their staff, to work with the other administrators on issues related to students in the building, and have the time to adjust their schedules any way they like, to meet with kids who are in need, or with groups of kids, or to work with departmental groups, or have departmental meetings, or involve kids in numerous other ways, can only be possible if they go full-time. From my perspective, the cost of this is really quite small in terms of our total budget. I think it would really be good for kids. It would be better in terms of our supervision and evaluation processes for teachers in the various departments. And if you look at it just on a mathematical basis, if teachers in a department, for the sake of argument, teach five classes of 25 kids each, that's 125 youngsters that they serve in each semester. If, in fact, 25 of them are not able... are not able to meet with their teacher as they would if their teacher were always available, you're really talking about 25 out of 125, where in essence, that's one out of five, 20% of their kids are not being served properly. So, that's my pitch. I'm sorry I didn't do it earlier. I strongly believe in it, and I hope you --
Are there any questions on department chairs tonight, knowing that we still have time to discuss these? Does anyone need further information? Mrs. McNamara?
I just, thank you so much for that clarification. So, in the scenario you've described, I do get it because it's more looking at the other perspective, what happens to those children who are in their class and how they're being serviced. But is there a way in which the department chairs could find time in their schedule to meet with those 25, for example, or just given the nature of their role? Could you just address that briefly?
Well, as you know, in our community, our kids schedule themselves fully. And if they're not scheduled fully, they squeeze everything together so they can participate in athletics. I mean, I see lots of teams being dismissed early so they can attend to competitions during the seasons. A lot of them have after-school activities, whether it be theater or club activity. And so you squeeze all their courses together and you squeeze their extracurricular activities into that, there's very, very little time for them to have any freedom at all. Whereas if department chairs were around and during lunch, if kids wanted to meet with a department chair, they could do so, which they can't necessarily do now because the department chair might be teaching or doing something else when the class is available.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions on department chairs? Mr. Maroni?
Yeah, so I think my question is, or is this, how to phrase this, is this something that, you know, the former superintendent proposed this, and would this be something that a new superintendent would like to have, is to have this teaching? And, you know, I guess the question is, as an interim superintendent, are you imposing your will on this budget with this, or is this something that would be universally accepted by all superintendents?
I cannot --
That's a better word.
I cannot speak for other superintendents. I don't think I'm the type that imposes their will.
Mr. Maroni loves colorful language.
But I would say this, different superintendents have different ideas. I think my predecessor made a really good effort in this proposal. On the other hand, as things occur, you have to take a second look at things, and things evolve. And in this instance, I think it's pretty much the agreement of the administrators in the high school and the middle school that if we could have the department chairs full-time and not have them teach, they would serve our kids better and serve the school better, and we would love to have it. And that's the reason this proposal was in the budget in the first place. Not because I want to take credit for it, but because this is, we had some really good educational discussions prior to putting this budget together, and this was one of the items that was high on the list.
Are there any further questions on department chairs and the modification? Okay, we will move down. The next modification was substitute teachers, which is fine. The administration issued an opinion that based on the current and past expenditures, that it would be inappropriate to cut them at a further level. What I would signal is that the board has brought substitutes up for years, and so going into negotiations with the teachers, that I would expect something to arise as this conversation and rates of absenteeism. If it cannot be modified in the budget, then the conversation maybe needed to take it into negotiations. It was my modification, but if anyone else has any questions on it? Comments?
Well, here's a point where I'd like to impose my will on this situation. In fact, the truth of the matter is, we do have provisions in all of our contracts that provide for sick leave and personal leave. In fact, the state of Connecticut even developed statutes to protect teachers that say they get 15 days a year for it. And that's out of the realm of negotiations. You can't even negotiate that down. But what you can do in negotiations is take a hard look at what personal leave is used for, what it can be used for. And you can also put limitations, not necessarily limitations, but you can take a look at when people are consistently ill or with lengthy illnesses, that you can place into the contract provisions that enable you to have greater access to the reasons to determine if there is an abuse or if it's legitimate.
So I don't want to get into negotiation strategies now, but I just think that my point that I wanted to resonate was that we are seeing increases in budget over here. And if it's not something that we can modify at this time, then maybe we modify it in negotiations.
Agreed.
Okay. Are there any other questions on substitutes? Okay. We will move to psychologists. We've heard a lot on them. Are there board questions regarding psychologists? Seeing none for this evening. We will move forward to, are there any questions on textbooks in RC11 or resource materials? Seeing none?
Sorry.
Yep.
Does the administration have a response to those?
Does the administration have a response to the modification of RC11, the textbook materials at 1,000 and the resource materials at 1,650?
That line was intended to be used for publications, not textbooks. However, we've taken that over and put it into the schools. So the schools will absorb that cost.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Susie? I'm sorry.
This is the textbook line?
Right.
For athletics, correct. So this was intended to be used for different magazines that they use both at the middle school and high school for PE. So instead of it being in this line, both Middlesex and the high school will absorb that cost.
So then, accounting for it wise, if, it's a board recommendation that hasn't gone to a motion yet, so there should be no accounting for it unless we decide to modify it? So it is on the table for a cut from the budget. It can't be reallocated to the budget. So I guess the question is now for the board, either the rationale for the cut or the concern over its placement?
I have a question to clarify what Susie said. When you're saying absorb, do you mean that, or you're removing it, or you're absorbing it?
In other words, within the middle school and the high school budget, as you know, we had a discussion at the budget meeting on January 5th that had magazines and publications. So rather than it being separate in Chris's budget, the high school and the middle school will absorb it within theirs.
Okay, so if that's the case, then it still has to be a cut then from the RC in which it exists?
Correct.
Okay, so--
It should be up above, right?
Okay, guys.
We're still, I'm still--
Here's what's happening. It has been put on the table. What the administration is saying is they would like to rename where it is. So the question is, where are you taking the money from? Mr. Brown, I believe you put the cut out. Is there a concern you have over this expenditure? And then we can decide where the expenditure is being taken from. Let's let Mr. Brown speak because it was his modification.
You know, I just saw the line repeating at the exact same number every year, and I basically put it on for discussion as to what the purpose was, which we're now having.
Okay. So if the administration would like to move it to another area, that's fine. But then we need, it's still a modification currently on the table. So it is for publications and subscriptions?
Correct.
And it will currently be housed in DHS or, it could be had in the--
Or MMS.
Correct.
Okay.
So we are not asking for additional funding within the dues and memberships that they have?
Our already budget is--
Correct.
Okay, so-- So the administration then needs to move it to the top line and recommend it as a cut from RC11.
We shall do that.
And can you make sure Mike Feeney sends it updated?
No, not until we do this.
So it's a straight cut for RC11, correct?
Yes.
I just want to make sure she's not moving it into Middlesex.
That's correct.
Okay, so we will move on to athletic training supplies. $5,500 for the ice machine. Are there any questions on that?
Wait a minute. We went, we did the textbooks, but did we do resource materials?
Yes, we did both. We've discussed both, textbooks and resource materials.
We're both, okay.
So those are both up and empty?
So we, athletic training supplies. Ice machine? Any discussion? Mrs. McNamara?
But it was mine, what happens if we don't approve this?
Can I suggest that we move this up to the top of the line? It's, we can look at this along with furniture. We need the ice machine, and any time we have a serious situation that seems to be getting worse, we try to accommodate it within our existing budget. So it's okay if you move this to the top of the column and take it as a reduction, if that's what the board wants to do.
Okay, so, but before, again, the board hasn't voted on whether or not they would like to do this? So I think first we need to hear, again, what is the need for, I think, Mrs. McNamara, what was your concern and what would you like in order to be able to consider this modification?
To clarify and repeat my question, what happens to the athletic department in this RC if this expenditure of, I don't know, whether it's 6,000 or 5,500 for a new ice machine? Is there other ways to get ice? Is that our children will be suffering? I just need to understand what the need is on this ice machine.
We will buy it out of the existing budget.
No, so-- No.
So you can't live with that? You can't buy it out of the existing budget right now?
I guess the question is, do we need a new ice machine?
Yes.
Is the ice machine not working or broken?
It's on its last legs.
It's on its last legs. So the professional administration is requesting a new ice machine because the one is on its last legs.
Yes. Okay, so this is replacing an existing ice machine that is now breaking.
So that is what Mr. Manfredonia presented.
Thank you. Appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Okay.
And just could I--
Yeah.
The ice machine is used to provide ice to injured athletes, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
I hope it's not used for martinis.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't. No, I don't think it was presented as a replace.
So now we will move on to interscholastic, well, these are coded incorrectly. But this is where Mrs. McNamara has proposed your concern over the funding of swim and dive. Would you like to discuss, as you were concerned that there were some misunderstandings this evening?
Yes. Well, first and foremost, I wanted to thank the public for coming forward with the swim and dive team and sharing their thoughts. I guess I still struggle, after five years, almost six now, being on the board, that this issue about funding for our, all of our athletics, and particularly the off-site, which we're addressing right now, into which swimming falls, that swim and dive seems to be exempt from sharing the cost of off-site facilities, unlike the other sports, ice hockey, girls, boys, skiing, and squash. And I struggle to find, understand why swimming seems to be in a category unlike all other sports. What is it that they've done? Why do they deserve full funding where these other sports do not have that benefit? I don't understand, and I don't feel that we've gotten an answer. Cherry, did you share the response from Dr. Landon?
No, so we'll do that now.
Okay.
Because we can't have a meeting on email.
Right, no, no, yeah. So Mrs. McNamara sent in some questions. Are there, and I will read out Dr. Landon's answers on those. Are there other board comments on this issue while I get them up?
I'll share my opinion, if that's okay.
Yep.
When we had our athletics off-site, I think at that point, Dr. Brenner explained that we are doing off-site facility payments based on historicals. We all, I think, agreed that we were okay with it. What I find troubling is to have this discussion within budget season. When they're building their budgets, things are done. Some of the seasons, you know, some sports have already paid for the year, some haven't. I would rather see us discuss this, if the board has appetite for it, outside of the budget cycle and have a full discussion on if we believe it needs to change. Because from the athletics off-site, when you re-watch the video, we all seem to agree pretty much, not unanimously, but that we were okay with it. So I find it, where, I don't think this is the right time to have the conversation. I'm not saying I don't think that things could or might change. I also think, given that, you know, what Mr. Maroni raised, we have a new superintendent coming in, hopefully, fingers crossed, by the end of the school year. I would also like to wait to hear his or her opinion on this if we're gonna take a deep dive into athletics. So that's my two cents on the matter for what--
Okay, so Chris's questions, what was the administration's philosophy and thought behind the presented numbers for facility and off-site expenses? And Dr. Landon and the administration answered that the BOE contributions were set many years ago, long before current administrations and Chris were involved, which is the same as what Dr. Brenner had reported out. Has this amount changed over the past five years? The amount that the board contributes to off-site sports has remained unchanged over the past five years. The only contributions that have increased are the parent contributions as the board contributions have remained fixed. Why does the BOE assume 100% rental fees for off-site swimming when it does not take 100% of that fee for other off-site sports? The answer lies in costs. The off-site costs for swimming for the board were small when compared to the off-site costs for other sports, including ice time for girls and boys hockey. I will add on, I have now watched, I think someone said it wasted four hours their lives are. I've now wasted 12. I didn't think it was a waste. It was valuable. But I will say, so what we really talked about at that off-site, and I actually thought there was valuable information, is that we discussed some of these issues, which were logjamming budget season. And we opened the meeting by saying that the goal of the off-site was to answer questions such that we weren't walking into the same questions in budget season. We seemed to be walking into the same questions in budget season. As part of that, at one point, we discussed where we were, and we were paying based on traditional agreements. And I think we kind of went around the table, Mrs. McCammon, Mr. Burke, Mrs. Stein, implicit in my comments, and Mrs. Hagerty-Ross, we were comfortable where we were. We did not take a formal vote on that.
Correct.
It was suggested that what people could do during budget season, if they wanted, was to bring adds or cuts. I don't, did not always feel that when we make a decision in June, or we come to an understanding in June, that then when we go to budget season six months later and the administration has built a budget, that we were changing mid-cycle, is my feeling and how I left that room. I think the answer is that we fund sports that are off-site based on traditional agreements. And short of changing that philosophy, I think it's difficult for administration to build a budget and then have major changes like this. So that would address Mr. Maroni's addition and Mrs. McNamara's cut. Similarly, I have concerns that we have modifications for cuts in the budget around academics, and yet we are adding in some places to athletics. That's concerning to me. The board can discuss, but that's a little uncomfortable for me. I do think these are extracurriculars. I do think that I would rather see adds to curriculum and athletic, uh, and academics and athletics is where I fall out on them. But I did watch it twice to kind of call everyone's opinions. Mrs. McNamara and Mr. Maroni are consistent in their concerns and their opinions. But when we left that, there was a comment of, do we all now kind of understand? Do we have any further questions? And those, there was not, I am unsure of where we are. I'd like to change where we are. So I think that to do it in budget season is difficult for the people planning the budget. It's a long-winded way to let you know where, I feel, but I watched it a lot of times.
I don't disagree with your, what happened, obviously it's all on tape, but one, we did not take a vote, and I clearly would not have voted for it.
Absolutely.
I guess when, the issue that I'm bringing up specifically is because of the off-site, because that's what we were addressing, and to make some type of continuity. It is very clear the public is sharing, we have no policy whatsoever on how we are handling athletics and funding. We have no copies of any agreements on any of these sports. We refer to agreements, and nobody has ever supplied anything that goes back to why and what was the rationale. Short of that, I think I, and I think Mr. Maroni, would like to start to address this problem now, or some way. I mean, do I want to cut the swim team off-site rental? No. The other suggestion is to start fully funding the offsites. Why do we do it for other sports and not the swim, or we do it for swim, I'm sorry, not the squash, the skiing, the boys' hockey, the girls' hockey? Why are those sports in a separate category that all the other varsity sports, which Darian High School students participate?
So I think what I hear you saying is that what you would like to do is move away from a model of traditional agreements into the board redesigning agreements.
If there's a rationale for, I'd like to understand what the rationale is for those traditional agreements, which not, no member of the sport has ever seen.
No, so there isn't. They're just traditional agreements. I mean, we're agreeing with you on where you are.
Mm-hmm.
The question is, does the board now reopen those agreements because there's a philosophical agreement to do so on the board? I have not seen that agreement to do it on the board. If we'd like to have yet another conversation on athletics and see if we can get that agreement, that is an open conversation for the board to have.
Yeah, I would like to call that vote, or have that discussion, or to move that as an agenda item, to see.
Well, we're having athletics again in the spring, and, and we can put it on there. The question is, in this budget season, do we make changes prior to having a philosophical agreement of whether we want to change the traditional models we have now?
Okay, I'm very happy in pulling any cut to the swim and dive team budget, and I would support the add, because I cannot sit here and discriminate against these other athletes based upon agreements I have no knowledge of.
Again, just discrimination's a big word. I'm not entirely sure, but if you'd like to own that word.
Or to put them in a different category.
It is, it is your decision whether to pull the modification or not.
I'm happy to pull that modification.
Okay.
I should say that's a cut to the offsite swim and dive team.
That's the cut of 7,800.
The cut of 7,800. Mr. Maroney, we have not gotten to yours, but we're coming to you. And Mrs. McNamara, I do hear that, at this point, you would like the board to make a decision on how it funds, and that can be a conversation in the spring.
Perfect.
It will be one of the points of that conversation. Uh, Mr. Maroney, what's going on? Thoughts?
My thought is, I don't know why, I don't know why this has to be a long-winded discussion. It's, it, you know, tradition, there used to be hazing in fraternities, that's tradition, right? That, that's no longer allowed. You know, that we, we, we evolve in the world, we change the way we do things, and yet, we're stuck at, at these antiquated, you know, again, I, I raised boys' hockey, you know, I don't have hockey players, but I find it outrageous that, that a boys' hockey parent has to pay $1,000 per participant to play hockey, where football gets a free ride, lacrosse gets a free ride, swimming gets a free ride, I have swimmers. Why? To me, it makes no sense at all. And again, as I stated last meeting, it's a varsity sport, it's a CIAC sanctioned sport. If it rises to that level that we think it's a varsity sport, to me, the Board of Education should fund, if not 100%, at least half, not 20, 29% of it. You know, girls' hockey is 28.5, I mean, that's outrageous in itself, just, you know, and, and skiing is 18%. Why, why are they all over the board? At least pick a number.
Right.
And, and to me, it's not that hard, I think we could all decide on what that number is. We could spend four hours deciding on it, or we can just say, let's pick a number and go with it.
So, I think the question is whether or not there's agreement on the board that there needs to be a uniform number.
But, to be fair, in the meeting over the summer, it was raised, if you don't agree with these, then bring it up at budget time to raise or add a number. And that's what I'm trying to do, because I didn't agree with it over the summer, and I don't, and I still disagree with it now, so I'm raising a number and saying 50%.
So, so we know where Mr. Maroney is on his modification, and, and if there's other board comments, that's fine, because the most, Mr. Burke?
I hear what you're saying, I, I just, a couple words stuck out to me, and I'm not so sure, not making a change means we're stuck. I mean, it means you do decide to do something or not to do something, but that's an affirmative choice. And, just because it's been around for a long time isn't inherently antiquated. And, I'm happy to have these discussions as, as part of an overall philosophy, and I understand that it, it's proper to make these, these cuts. I, I will tell you that, you know, philosophically, I can't, and these cuts and adds, I, I don't think that a blanket 50% or a blanket full funding is necessarily the answer. Equity doesn't necessarily mean equal, but I think this full discussion should be had as a board policy, whether we as a board decide to fully fund all athletics, as opposed to a budget statement, although it's completely proper that you're doing so now, I, I couldn't do it in that, you know, fashion.
Mrs. Stein?
Um, I would just add that I personally would prefer to hear from the experts, the administration, Mr. Manfredonia, Ellen, if we're going to change it, what their thought on a percentage, or a, whatever the equation is to do this, we're sort of looking at it in a vacuum, or we're picking hockey, or we're picking swimming, and it, it needs to be a global view if we're going to go down this, if the, again, I will say, if the board has appetite for it. I don't feel comfortable without guidance from the experts, just deciding randomly it's 50%. I don't, I don't, I can't stand behind that.
Mrs. Ritchie?
I, I do agree at taking a closer look, but I think it has to be a holistic approach, and it's not just focused on, we seem to be very focused on facility fees, but as one of our speakers pointed out, those who have the benefit of an in-district or on-campus facility, there are other costs that aren't showing up on those charts. So, I think we need to take everything into consideration, whether it's per-athlete cost, or potentially, if there's some source of revenue that, I, I think, maybe seven or eight years ago, there was a pay-to-play that went along with athletics. So, I think if we have this discussion, I would like to see a comprehensive overview of all the aspects of athletics.
Okay, so, right now, this modification stands, is there any more information that anyone would need such that they're able to deliberate and make a decision on cut night? Mr. Brown?
Just a point of order, the number is incorrect. The number should be $24,737.50.
Can you read that again?
Twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
We'll have Mr. Feeney.
And that's for boys' and girls' hockey and skiing.
We, we will have.
Right, it's to bring all offsite sports to 50%.
Okay, we'll have Mr. Feeney check those numbers. Everyone just understands where we are, and then, if they need, if they need anything, now's time to ask before we actually deliberate in full. Okay. New physical education equipment, is there any additional information that anyone needs and/or, Mr. Maroney, is there anything you'd like to say on it?
Again, I think what I'd like to say, and I think I said it last week, but I'll reiterate, is, you know, again, I think, I've heard some, some discussions that, you know, this should be raised by the coach of the lacrosse team, or we should wait until the CIAC mandates that helmets be necessary, and I asked the question of why? Why do we, you know, if we, if we value the safety, Dr. Landon actually raised it and said, you know, he, he thought it was crazy that girls' lacrosse don't wear helmets, and so, I, I support that thought. And for me, you know, again, Mr. Lynch and I were talking the other, yesterday about seat belts, and I own a '65 Mustang, and I was the first American car to have seat belts, 1965. It didn't, it took another 20 years for states to mandate the law to have seat belts mandatory for all drivers. To me, this is a similar situation, where we have these lacrosse helmets, they can be used, why are we going to wait 20 years for the state to mandate the usage when, when we can start saving children's concussions and, and mental health right now, as opposed to waiting for the CIAC to finally rule that, you know what, it makes sense to wear a helmet when people are back, back batting your head with a stick and a ball's bouncing around hitting you in the head?
Hands went up, Mrs. Ritchie?
My concern with this is, well, first of all, I don't want to be purchasing something that's going to sit in a closet and go unused, because are all the other teams that we're competing against going to be wearing helmets? And if our girls put helmets on, aren't we endangering the lives of other children on the field? Because we have helm, they have helmets on, our students have helmets, but the other ones don't. So, I really think we need to hear from the athletic department and what their position is on this particular item before we go and allocate taxpayer funds for something like this.
Mrs. McNamara?
Um, I agree. I, I certainly applaud Mr. Maroney's initiative and being forward in, in front of this. Before I do decide, I would like to get a comment from the girls' lacrosse coach on it.
Okay.
So, I'm seeking more information just from that individual.
Yeah, I would have the same question. Do we have any comment from the coaching or administration on this issue?
So, my, my comment would be, Mr. Maroney, it seems like you've done a fair amount of research on this. The rest of the board doesn't have the benefit of that research, and, and really, as individuals to go out and research lacrosse, if this is something that is necessary for our sports players as protective equipment, I would expect to hear that from the department and from the administration. Because I think that we could find sports all across that, like, individuals might choose to go and do research on, but we can't all benefit from it unless we all have information. And, and to be completely honest, I have not done research on girls' lacrosse and whether helmets are appropriate on the field. I know there is some research that, that says that kids without helmets playing against kids with helmets have, have issues. I don't know how to cull all that information without people who really know the sport and know the information. So, I think that if it's an initiative that's important, we need, we need to hear fully about it.
Would you like, would you like me to share the information that I gathered?
No.
No?
And here's why, here's, here's why. Well, I mean, I value you, and, and I know you, but I think that as a board, we would need to be able to verify the research you've done, we'd be able to, need to hear whose research you're citing, and, and that's a lot of work for you, if you'd like to give us a whole board presentation, but I don't know if your opinion and your individual research, without the board being able to hear it, digest it, verify it, hear from experts on it, just like mine, I don't know if it's more than opinion, and that is not disrespectful to you, because I know you and I have talked, and you, you feel like you've done a fair amount of research on this.
I, may I just say, I think we're getting into sticky waters here, where we're talking about board members doing research and presenting things to put forward. That is not our job. I, I am uncomfortable with us even entertaining this conversation, because where do you draw the line? And we can start talking about curriculum and what the best curriculum is, that's, that's not our job.
No, I think, Mr. Brown and I would like to hear the response from the administration, please, if that's possible.
But, but, but I would say, that if there are, I, I don't think, from my opinion, any
sports teams that seem to need protective equipment are not reticent to come forward and ask it of us. So, I, I know that, that helmets are, there's a new movement towards helmets, I would think that that would have to come from our administration, from our athletic director.
Has there been any work from the administration to research helmets for girls' lacrosse?
No.
Okay, so at this point, you would be ordering that work, and is the board ordering work from the administration on researching of helmets in girls' lacrosse? Is there a will of the board to do so?
I'm sorry, Terry, you, you just asked, is there any more information required of this board in order to evaluate this proposed add?
Because this, this proposal is coming from Mr. Maroney, is not coming from the administration.
No, 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 but to evaluate, for us to vote on this proposed add, I believe the question was, does anyone require more information of the administration in order to make this?
And then ask for the coaches and.
And, right, so just to clarify.
Everybody stop for a sec. What the administration would have to do is go and do work on helmets for girls' lacrosse. Are we as a board ordering that work?
I have the request, I believe Mr. Brown made the request.
Okay, so there are two members of the board, is there anyone else who would like to order the request? Mrs. McCammon?
I, I think the request is to hear from the administration, from Mr. Maroney, I, I mean, Manfredonia, what his opinion on this matter is. I don't know that it requires research, I think we would just like to hear from him and his current opinion.
Right, yeah, that's it. That's fine, I'm speaking to Mr. Maroney's point. Mr. Brown?
So, my question earlier was very simply answered already by Dr. Lynn, was there any information? He said there is not at this time, so my question has been answered.
Okay.
My question remains, has the coach been asked regarding this topic?
I have no idea, my, my guess is not at this time.
Okay, could we confirm if the administration could ask the appropriate authorities in the administration their opinion on this topic? Thank you.
Okay.
Director of Technical Instruction, Dr. Landon, would you like to discuss what you outlined in your memo?
Yes, let me begin by stating that every community in our DURG, you know, in DURG A, has a Director of Instructional Technology, they're 12 months, and they're administrator. This is what we had, and what we still have in the budget, but of course, our director left us in October. In the meantime, Dr. De Silva has tried to do whatever she can to keep up with what needs to be done on our buildings. Of course, we have technical support in Jeff, Jeff Adams and a technical staff, so we're able to keep ahead of things. But the, the problem is, we are falling behind in terms of where we should be, or could be, in terms of what we would expect from, in today's day and age, in terms of digital learning and digital assessment, and the use of technology in assisting instruction. I think it's a vital position. If the director had not resigned early in the year, we, there wouldn't have been a question, because we would have maintained it. I think it's really an important position, and I would urge the board to, to maintain it in the budget, and Dr. De Silva, if you want to add to that, please do so.
I actually think that Dr. Landon presented it well. The reality is, through the hard work of a lot of our administrators, who really stepped up over the course of the year, given the timing of our previous directors leaving, they have done a lot of work outside of their traditional role to keep up with ensuring that our students' needs were met primarily. That was really the, the priority of the school year in terms of his responsibilities, especially with the one-to-one initiative. But the reality is, that role is what pushes innovation and personalization in terms of student learning, personalized learning. And without having somebody be at the forefront of that work, I think the Darien Public Schools will be at a significant disadvantage.
Are there any board comments on this?
I'm happy to speak to it, because I put the cut on the table, and I did it because it, the idea came to me late, and I apologize again for that. I just wanted some clarification on your feelings on it, just so we could have a discussion, and I am more than satisfied with the response in the memo and tonight, and I am happy to pull the cut.
So, you're pulling, okay.
Okay, I just wanted to ask about the, the salary, is that a standard market salary that's been put in the budget, or is that, was that, we're just carrying over what was being paid to the prior?
I'll pass it on to Marge, but I know those are negotiated salaries, so I'm not sure I can touch that.
Okay. Director. Ms. McCammon?
I, I understand the cut was put on morally for informational purposes, but I'm the board member who sat on the library committee, looking at primarily our facilities, but ultimately, looking at, you couldn't look at facilities without looking at, or at least being aware of some of the changes in library curriculum, so I just wanted to echo, from my experience, that the role of that position was really critical in terms of innovation, thinking about future planning, about how we think about learning, connecting instructional technology to the classroom. So, just from the perspective of a board member who sat in that environment, just to add to the conversation. Again, I, I get the purpose of the cut.
That's right, we will, we will pull the modification, and we'll move on to RC 16, Legal Services, Dr. Landon?
Our, our current run, our current run rate is about $325,000. We are proposing $282,000, which is a pretty significant reduction in legal expenses. The reason for this is, first, we anticipate reducing our expenditures by processing all of our FERPA requests and a goodly number of our FOIA requests in-house with existing staff. We're going to assign some of those responsibilities to staff, and Marge has done an assessment, and it looks like, you know, we'll be able to do that in a way that reduces our legal expenses. But the big one, of course, is that we have had two FOIA requests that have been ongoing and running for a long time. They have cost us a fortune in legal expenses over the last two years. Those cases now are in the hands of our insurance company, because the, the FOIA requests got to a point where it was not limited just to information, but there was also some concern about addressing individuals, and under liability policy, it automatically flips over to KIRMA. So, we will not be incurring any legal expenses to any great extent, it'll be normal again with regard to FOIA. FERPA will do, a lot, we'll do it in-house, we'll do as much FOIA as we can in-house. So, we feel pretty confident that our expenses are going to go down, but nonetheless, this is a big year for teacher negotiations, so we're going to incur an expense on that end. And so, we've built that into, in, we've built that into our, our projections. But we feel very, very confident, with $282,000, we're good to go, and hopefully, we won't spend. We're good to go, and hopefully, we won't spend as much as we anticipate.
Okay. So part of this was my modification with our request that we bring in-house legal redaction instead of paying an attorney, bring it in-house. So I'm pleased to hear that we can do that. Are there any other questions on legal services, knowing that we're not yet making changes? Mailing expenses. Was there any update on that proposal, or is that modification just standing as is until the board votes?
As I recall, you want to talk to me?
No. So I think, to be clear, Mr. Feeney had a family emergency. So why don't we hold that one until we discuss it with him at the budget meeting? Okay. Turnover, I'm also going to hold unless anyone has any questions, because that's my modification. I'd like to speak to Mr. Feeney. Budget control, are there any feelings from the administration on that modification?
Is that a proposed cut to budget control?
Yes. It is all of budget control on the table at the moment.
I have concern.
If you'd like to share them with us, we'd appreciate it.
The problem is, we do our best to anticipate what our enrollment needs are going to be. But invariably, we find that we have surges in enrollment, not only at the elementary level, but at other levels as well. But kindergarten has always been a big one. To protect the board, I think the board needs to continue to budget this amount so that the board doesn't have to detract from the regular budget during the school year by reducing expenditures in other prime areas where we need to expend the funds in order to cover the costs of additional personnel that we can anticipate we're going to have anyway. And if we don't use the money, just like this year, we turned back to the town $790,000, wasn't it? That's what we'll do again. And if we have money left over, we'll turn it back to the town. And as far as I know, the town always welcomes that end-of-year gift.
Well, I also, as the board heard this year, my concern about moving all, removing all of budget control is that sometimes we have IEP mandated staff, that we need staff immediately, and so that is where they come. Am I correct, Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Okay. So again, this is just if anyone needs further information on it, but budget control seems to be important. Any questions? Mr. Maroney?
So just as a clarification, Mrs. Ritchie, of why all of it? Because again, when we were discussing this, I heard people saying, well, is it one or is it two? And for me, we need to discuss them all, and then we decide how many we keep. So the rationale is to put them all on, and if we, I'd rather do more proposed cuts and end up with less than to propose one, and then we cut two, which I think is disingenuous for me. So that's the rationale, to put it all there, and then we decide where we go. And if we cut less, that's fine. But if you propose $63,000, or whatever that number is, 65, 840, and then you do two, to me, that's not being, that's not playing fair. So the rationale is to do it that way.
Or if you should leave budget control alone.
And my second point as well with this is, and I don't know if this is the right time to do this, I would also like to propose a rename of budget control item to enrollment control, or something else along those lines, because budget control, to me, sounds--
Don't do it.
You go ahead.
I won't say it. It doesn't sound like a budget item.
Mrs. McCammon?
It would be helpful to understand from the administration the assumptions that went into this number. You're looking at, I mean, I know we talked about it, but you're looking at X number of section breaks, plus you usually build in for, you know, one parent and one special ed teacher. What were, what are the assumptions that went into building this number? And why did you pick four?
So given that Mr. Feeney is not here, Mrs. Ritchie, would you put that on for the budget meeting that we have, and then Mr. Feeney can give us a full explanation of what went into his assumptions? I think it's probably best doing with him since he built the model. Correct? Is everyone okay with that?
Uh huh.
Okay. We have Project Lead the Way, Professional Development, R.C. 22. Is there any information anyone needs from the administration on that?
I can actually just add to that. So we double booked there. So Mr. Reynolds put it in his budget, and I put it in my budget.
Okay. So we should see that come off up top, then? We'll make that change?
That's correct.
Okay. So that'll be an administrative change to the top of the line? With the explanation of the double booking, please. Excess cost reimbursement, I would also, unless the board wants to hold, it looks like Mr. Feeney showed us what it would be for the increase of up to 2.851. I think that's probably best held until he's here and having a full description, unless anybody has any objections? Health insurance holds right now, substitute teachers, we've discussed. Early learning tuition program. There was a modification to go from three to four and a half percent. Is there, it was my modification I can discuss, but you all know how I feel. Mrs. McCammon?
I just would like to understand the framework. I thought last year we agreed to a tuition increase schedule that we thought was reasonable. If we want to depart from that schedule, I just would want us to be in agreement. What are we trying to accomplish with ELP tuition? Are we trying to match current rates? Are we trying to be slightly under? What's our goal with tuition if we're going to depart from the schedule that we had set forward?
Sure. My increase is that I think that at the moment, we're considerably undervalued for the number of hours and the professional staff that we provide. And I do think that at some point, bringing that more in line, and I know we saw some numbers, but I do think that the district has a strong, robust program for which we have a waiting list. We provide excellent teaching and the longest hours around. And so I'd like to see it brought closer to kind of state, community standards for preschools. But if we choose to deviate, that is a discussion that the board can have that evening. And if the administration could, I think Mr. Feeney provided us with a schedule of increases. Is there anything in addition you'd like to that?
I'd like to hear from Laura, because I know that enrollment is also very sensitive. And so I think that when we talk about tuition, we have to talk about making sure we manage the correct enrollment number for typical peers.
Okay. So if Mrs. Strain could be available on cut night, and/or if she could issue any opinions on it beforehand to the board so that they can be prepared to discuss, that would be appreciated. Okay. Believe it or not, we made it through the modification list. We will move on to the discussion of the proposed legislation, S.B. 454 and S.B. 457. I will start with an update from the legislators I was able to get in touch with. Senator Looney, Senator Duff, they were both emailed, as was Senator Leoni. I have not heard anything back from Senator Looney. Senator Leoni issued a statement, but I did not hear back directly from him. I did have the chance to discuss with Senator Duff. He feels that his proposal is significantly different than Senator Looney's. He gave me some of his assumptions, of which, if we were going to, if this was to move forward, I think that we would need a lot more information on, because some of the basic assumptions I would take issue with. I encouraged him to talk to local boards of ed, including us. He felt that this was an attempt to put more resources in the classroom for children, given the fiscal state, situation in the state. I did let him know that I thought Darien taxpayers put most of the resources in Darien classrooms. So I did not see that if this would affect us, how, if that is his goal, it was being accomplished, and that he would really need to provide us with a plan. He seems to think that it's not something that we should worry about, given the population. He has a hard stop at 2,000. I did express the concern. I heard from some of you, and I share myself, that hard stops in bill compromises are rare. And so that his hard stop might be 2,000, but those numbers can shift. I did get a chance, Terri Wood, I reached out to Terri Wood and Matt Blumenthal. Terri did email me back this afternoon, and I will send it out to you all. I'm sorry that it didn't get to you before the meeting. You know, she clearly expressed her current concerns about the bill. She also did that this weekend at a community conversation. I'm happy to send it to you, but, you know, in quick language, she said that both bills have the same legislative intent with different metrics applied. Both would strongly encourage school districts to regionalize. S.B. 457 would regionalize schools in school districts with less than 40,000 people, and S.B. 454 would regionalize schools with a school district population less than 2,000 people. She said also to note, both of these bills will have public hearings in the Education Committee, and while they are Senate bills, the committee structure is joint. Certainly, she said, there's merit to the discussion of what smaller school districts could do to address their declining student population. What she opposes is a one-size-fits-all approach and a top-down, heavy hand of government without logical thought or documented metrics. Personally, I would share her views.
I agree wholeheartedly.
Yes.
What did she say?
Representative Blumenthal was equally concerned about the language. He did issue a statement today in the paper. I had a longer conversation with him, and he said he'd be happy to speak to the board or any constituents on this matter. He also said that this will have a public hearing and encouraged voices, encouraged any board voices to be heard. He thought that at the moment, this was a broad brush stroke, in that if there are gains from regionalization, that he would need to see a plan, he would need to see where the gains are, and he thought that education certainly isn't the place that you would start those conversations. So I have some additional comments, but if the board has any other thoughts that they'd like to share. Mrs. McHammert?
I just want to thank Dr. Landon. I read your comments that appeared in one of our local papers. Your, it sounded like your strong feelings that this is not a good idea, that you would not support such legislation, and I just wanted to thank you.
Mrs. McCammon?
Did you reach out to CAE at all, and have they issued?
They have not issued a policy statement on this yet.
Thank you.
What I would say, and I think to really compliment this board, and it really shows the strength of this board, is that there have been some calls that Democrats need to speak on this, or Republicans need to speak on this. This board has been incredibly unified on this issue. Mrs. McHammert reached out with information as soon as she got it from CES. Mrs. Stein had a chance to talk to legislators and certainly expressed her displeasure. Mr. Deneen called with questions and expressed his views to those that were willing to listen. I think Darien is incredibly lucky, and the public should hear this, that on issues that affect your schoolchildren is not about being Democrat or Republican. This board represents the community and the community of Darien. And who puts forward the bill, whether they have a D or an R next to their name, is not the issue. It's what's best for our children. And so I appreciate all the work that went in bipartisanly from this board to gather as much information as they could. And while I highlighted, you know, three of our members, I think I could do it for any of you if you had had the opportunity. So I appreciate it. We will watch it with interest. If I get any other updates, then I will send out Representative Wood's comments in full to you all. But we should keep an eye on this, and we will do it for Darien. Mrs. McHammert?
Then just sort of to wrap it up, do we as a board want to make a statement, or whether we're supporting this, or where we stand, so we can share this with our representatives? Or should we be doing that individually? What were your thoughts on that?
My thoughts are that it's early. Certainly, we went out with a comment, which you all saw. I'm happy if we'd like to strengthen that language in any way. No one has asked for additional comment. I haven't seen anyone on this board for it. You can speak now if you are. But if you'd like to strengthen language or strengthen a statement, I'm happy to, I'm happy to do so.
I'm comfortable personally saying that I do not support this legislation. I do not support these discussions. I think this is just a bad path that they're going down. So I personally would like to be as strong as, you know, you want to say Democrat, Republican, there's two Democrats senators, Will Haskell and Alexander Burkison, who said they do not support this legislation. I think it was a very strong comment from two Democratic senators in our DURG, and I would be as strong with that statement.
I think we've said we don't support, but I'm happy to reiterate it. Is there anyone who feels differently than that? That they're not comfortable with that statement? Okay. So I am happy to, with as much vim and vigor, at this time, the proposals as they are, to think that it is unwise, given the information we have out now, to support anything like this. Mrs. McCammon?
Just purely informational, did you hear from Duff whether there was any basis for the threshold that he particularly chose?
He, I asked him. He said that there have been studies. I asked for the study. Haven't gotten it yet. But he said that there were studies, and that 2,000 was the number within those studies that was populations under 2,000 students reaped benefits from it. So I did ask him to share that. I did say that if there are values to this type of thing, put it on paper, show it to us. Show, and not to us, show it to the districts that are at 2,000 and let them understand. But that any sort of mandated regionalization, generally, when you mandate things like that, it doesn't go well. When you get people to see the benefits, if there are, and they volunteer to do it, I think there have been successes in Connecticut, but this kind of mandated language. And through that, the bill language has changed. And all the representatives did caution that the language will continue to change. So I think we need to watch it, but in its current state, it would, Darien would be hard-pressed, I think, to support something like this. Yeah.
Separate comment. I think, I think it might be worthwhile for us to think a little bit about, I think, you know, regionalization is going to get talked about in terms of resources, and I think they're just, the impacts of it are a lot larger. I'd like us to be talking about where we want education to go, what we want to see in terms of innovation, and things that we feel like would be really stifled beyond making sure that we're not just saying it's about resources. It's also about, and I know in your statement, you talk about, you know, really solving for children. But I think we can talk about solving for children and being forward-looking. And I'm not sure I'm convinced that regionalization is in any way forward-looking. I think it is a responsive--
No, the biggest, yeah, the biggest concern in these bills is it does not talk in any way, shape, or form about how children would be affected.
Right.
And that, to me, is really concerning. What we do is educate children. And so if you can't talk to that, I think you need to go back to the drawing board. Any other comments? I feel a little bit strongly on this one. Sorry, guys. Are there any other comments? Then I will entertain, nope, no public comments, we had it all. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Burr? Mr. Maroney seconds. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. All right. Okay.